We've been having some camera issues, so just stick with me real quick, I apologize. Okay, it is six oh one PM on Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll call the common council meeting to order, but stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Room number please.
Middleton.
Here.
Varga.
Here.
Romano.
President.
Wigo.
Here.
Bakum.
Here.
In front of you are the minutes from our last meeting, which was on September ninth. I did have one change, and that is under my report, I think, yeah, under mayor's report. The one, two, three, fourth line should say Senate Enrolled Act One instead of Senate Rollback One. So besides that, any other changes or corrections? Hearing none can have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Jenny for the discussion. All those finish for the usual sign, it is unanimous. I'm going to mix up the order a little bit, if you'll bear with me, we'll do department head reports. I think I'm gonna start with Shadup, just because. Mike, department head report, please.
I got pictures of the screen before and after cleaning, it looks great.
Good.
It'd be another probably a week and a half before they start putting it back together. The cowl pipe that goes down to the pump was pitted pretty bad, so that's all gonna be replaced. And they rebuilt the pump and also the electric motor, so it'd be like a new one or nothing.
Okay.
Also Glow is back in town going door to door for the next two or three days. And they were here last week digitalizing our records for us, you know, to have, so.
And Glow will get the lead out, so they're the ones that they go through and help identify lead lines throughout the city, all those kind of good things, so. Questions to Mike? Thank you, Sean.
Of course, our ongoing pole changing project is still ongoing. Guys are still working on that, we're gonna move to a different area soon. Our project for our co-use poles out on State Road nine between five hundred north and six hundred north, Little Bear Road, has started, they've started moving lines around, they're gonna pull in new lines in the next couple of weeks. That project is expected to be completed sometime in the middle of October. Had two guys at line school this week, they'll be there all week, it's their second class. We also have two guys going to climbing lab the week after, so we're gonna have myself and Matt Mag are gonna be randomly popping into those classes, teaching some of the courses, so we'll be kinda in and out a little bit, doing some of that, but really excited about the new location for the Indiana Municipal Record Association lineman training. We were able, somebody that don't know, we were able to get a portion of the field, St. Gerluk College in Rensselaer, St. Joseph's. So they closed the college, most of the college down, we were able to get some of the dorms and allow the property, build a brand new facility of poles and lines and things to practice on. We started a lineman pre-apprentice program, which is basically kids that graduate high school, not sure if they wanna go to college, what they wanna do, they wanna get a trade, they can jump in for a six-week program there, which gives them their CDL, their climbing certification from the state, and general line knowledge. We also give them information on how to fill out a resume, how to fill an application, how to interview. So when they come out of that class, they can apply pretty much anywhere in the country and have a really good foothold when everybody else is applying. So really exciting stuff going on over there. Other than that, just started working on some more engineers, some new projects getting ready to come up, and I'll bring that to you when we get that all done.
Questions to Sean? Thank you, Mike.
I was still working on a clean digester out. Haven't talked to him yet, but I will be out tomorrow, I'll talk to them on Thursday, they have to be done at the end of this week. Because I pushed the other company back that was coming in, they were supposed to start Monday. I pushed them off till twenty-nine, so they had to be done by Saturday at the latest, because they don't work on Sunday. So they have to basically, I need to stress to them and me to make it look like you've never been here.
So we stopped, we did our five fast packs yesterday, stopped by the digester and stuff, and I guess number one, I didn't realize it was so deep. That was a, that was a new moment for me, and second is.
Just under four hundred thousand gallons.
Yes, and second was what they were shoveling into the, into the tube, if you will, the suction tube, if you will.
Sand.
What?
Yeah, I mean, it was, it's, it, it looked like dirt, and it was like cake dirt, if you will. They can walk on it?
Yes.
Then when they go and dump it, it goes all slurry.
It's, it's, it just, it was the craziest thing, just, so. I think it was a really cool thing, so hopefully people got to see like a little taste of that on our, don't use that, don't use it, a little bit of that on the video.
We made their list of the worst digesters they've ever known.
Yeah.
There's only two that's been worse than that, one, they had to clamshell hairballs out and then cut around it with chainsaws to get it out.
Oh my gosh.
And then the other one was full of sand too.
But I think what, I apologize for broke our time here, but I think Bob had said that he actually found that some of our blowers actually in the digester were not working, so.
Yeah, the mixing alles.
The mixing stuff, yeah.
And they took a day last week that they weren't working because they were bringing a different back truck in from Noblesville. They got one out of Fort Wayne that didn't do anything, they wasted the whole day. So they brought a bigger machine in from Noblesville, and it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's a monster. So that's been going well, they made real good progress today until it rained this afternoon, so that cut today's work short, tomorrow's not looking good.
Right.
So.
Clock's ticking, right?
Yeah. I'm not nervous yet, but I'm getting there.
Okay, gotcha.
So that's, I know they're ongoing, but anyway, we'll get done and completed. Guys started the third quarter picking of the forest management SDI, then the first half today, second half will be tomorrow. And then they also tried to repair an ARB today, which did not work out, so they made contact with SDI, and they are going to have a facility shut down the first week of October. So the one day that they have their shutdown, where they're not gonna have any clothes at all, my guys will go out there, drain the line back, and go in there and completely tear that ARB out, and install a new one, add a new shut-off valve. And the new shut-off valves are all stainless, the hardware is stainless, ARBs are either, if it's not plastic, part of it's stainless. So I'll make that like new, so. That's about it for right now, just day-to-day stuff.
Okay, questions to the mic?
I have to say, I saw that video, and I know all of our employees get put in some pretty horrible situations with that one. I didn't understand how deep that was either, you know, watching them scoop whatever, and I'm like, oh geez. Like I said, I know all of our body gets put in situations on our staff, but that one, I have the ultimate respect for the guys down in that.
Yeah, so my staff's been doing any of the cleaning, but the nozzles that are down in there, they went down in and tore those apart, cleaned them out, put them back together, and then came out.
And that stuff was solid on the bottom.
Yeah, it actually helped them because they didn't have to use a ladder on one side, they just stood on top of it and.
It's incredible, it really is incredible. If you get a dry moment tomorrow, stop by and climb up the side of that, that kind of slope and look, I mean, it's incredible.
You're better, look through them.
You know, you'll get in it, but look over top of there.
I can look down here, I'm no more, I'm down here.
Down here. Other questions to Mike? Thank you, Tom.
Mayor, I can assure you nothing in my reports, top cutting hairballs with chainsaws. So I feel like I should yield my time to the rest of the group. We started training all the shift guys on the new ESO software, that's the new software we had to go to for the new federal reporting, what used to be NFFers. Toby's still working on Sierra Wireless stuff, when he thought he had it all worked out, of course, they pushed an update and it all went to shambles again. Gotta love technology. One oh seven is back in service, we got it back from Fire Service Incorporated down Indianapolis. They said it went pretty smooth, I still haven't got the bill for it, so not looking forward to that. Adam have, it will, it will be working with that convoy technology in reference to that camera system. There were some questions on how that all hooks up, and it has to be wireless from the tip of the ladder down to, if you run anywhere past the turret, because that turns, and if it's cable, it's gonna just wrap up and get broken, snap off. So it's gotta be, it's gotta be wireless, and Adam's not so sure that a part of it is, and they need to figure out how to make it so. Firefighters fighting hunger campaign with Kroger went well, the last, I think the report from the guys was they had two minivans full of food that went to the local food banks. Land and Tim's doing good, moving through his training really well. The burn tower went through its inspection last week and passed with flying colors, there was some painting and things like that that needed to be done, but everything went well. The big thing is, we did pump testing, and one oh one and one oh seven, the vacuum test or the vacuum portion of that pump testing, they failed. It's not that big of a deal, because we don't really draft, we have hydrants that push water to us, we don't have to pull water. But it is the first indication that you got some ball valves going out, so arms will be here to repair those ball valves on October, yeah, October seventh, to repair those ball valves. As long as they're not too bad a shape, they can just redo the outside of the ball valve and repair them, so that's a good thing.
Questions to Tom? Thank you, Garrett.
All right, we have five applicants moving forward to the Waterworks interview, which is scheduled for October second. Prison Fest was this past Saturday, was a success, had a minor issue that occurred, but it was addressed promptly and no issues after that. Tornado sirens were installed, we do, they aren't working yet because now we realize that the battery's set out there with no action for so long, so now we have to replace the batteries in the battery box, the chargers in it are rusting, so we're gonna replace them as well, so. If it ain't one thing, it's another. Really, I mean, I know a month or so ago, you talked about comp time, I know Beth is working on that policy, and I know she told the council that it was gonna come in front of them. So yeah, other than that, we're just moving forward.
Questions to GP? Thank you, Matt.
We had the slide refinished on the insides of the slides to get the calcium buildup and stuff that was on them all cleaned up, so they should be good as new. We'll have a little foaming when the pool starts up this next year, but they gave us some chemical to put in to stop that foaming. We had the office parking lot sealed and striped for parking spaces, we were just going in and parking wherever. Van Am did that, they were scheduled to do the parking lot at the pool as well, and they finished that up today. We also had to patch what, Wygents, they lowered two storm sewers, and they left just gravel there. So we ran up to Milestone and got the paving stuff, and we patched those holes, and Van Am's gonna probably be painting the lines on that on Thursday morning. Streets helping us out by making the concrete, the path between River Run Court and Columbia Parkway, they're making that concrete. They're actually saving us quite a bit of money, like, quite a bit of money.
Tens of thousands of dollars.
Yes, by doing that, so I appreciate those guys doing it. The speed limit signs now are up in both Eagle Park and Warshes, they're fifteen mile an hour. We, I talked to Gary, and that's what the ordinance says, that in all parks, they're fifteen miles an hour. So we had on September thirteenth, Lifewise put on a pickleball tournament to help their programs out. JFL games are going on, we have soccer games going on as well. Friday, we had homecoming parade set up, so it's been, that place has been hopping for a couple of weeks.
And the pool's not even going.
It's not, and the parking lot's been full, so.
Yeah.
Definitely, definitely being used.
Okay, questions to Mike? Thank you, Terry.
Well, I was on vacation last week, so I don't have much to report on, other than the beach was great. Two major projects I haven't been wanting on are either finished or on hold, so other than that, the day-to-day has been keeping me really busy, so I'm kinda glad they're on hold.
Gotcha. I imagine you don't have questions for Terry, so.
I mean, I kinda want to know the beach.
Chip?
Nothing to report, no. The Blue River Trail is about ninety-nine percent complete, found out today that they should be in by the end of the week to finish all the. My house is about ninety-nine percent complete, all, you know, so, yeah, they're supposed to be in by the end of the week to finish striking, get all the detour signs down. Then we do have a task at somehow getting across Hidicap Accessable, which we've got a plan for the railroad, but that'll at least wrap up the majority of Blue River Trail. I've been tasked and been working on trying to come up with a request for proposals for the jail that we now own, and trying to get rid of it before utility bills hit us. Been working with the mayor on the possibility of having an amphitheater at Eagle Park, and working with HWC, our engineering firm, for a downtown plan, getting downtown plan completed, like done. So other than that.
Questions to Chip? Let me talk about both those since you brought those up. So amphitheater, we've had some preliminary estimates that are, that have been given to us by the engineering firm, which is JPR, those came in a little higher than, like everything else in my life right now, coming in fairly high, higher than what I expected. But I think there are some ways in which we can both control cost as well as try to ensure that the work stays local. And so there's a process that you probably have heard of called BOT, which is Built, Operating, Transfer. We've been looking into some of that information, so typically, and I'll talk a little bit more about this probably at the next meeting, but typically, we in the city have done a, what we, what we know as the design bid build process, right? We go to a firm, we design it, and then we go put that design out to bid, and then we get bids in, and then we award a bid to somebody, and then that bid gets built, okay? And BOT is a little different, where we basically solicit for qualifications and a proposal from different firms who come in and they basically manage the project from start to finish. So we have conceptual ideas of what kind of the amphitheater could look like and things like that, but it, but they go into the engineering, and then they go through the construction phase, and they basically guarantee us, before we sign up, not in line, they guarantee us a maximum price. And then from that maximum price, if there are savings, then it is negotiated as to what happens with those savings. We incentivize it that we get some of the savings and they get some of the savings, we're all winning if they drive down that price, right? Obviously, with some approvals from us as to, in that construction process, like, so that we don't cheapen it along the way, but maybe instead of using this material, we use this material, and it's just as good, and it saves us thousands of dollars, right? So it's those kind of things. So we're, so Chip and I have been working a little bit on the BOT process and just understanding how that works. Many different communities are moving that direction because it does give a little bit more flexibility in the process, and it's not one of those where you award the bid, and then, oh, all of a sudden, they find, oh, the engineering firm had this in there, well, we can't do that, so now the price just went up with a change order, right? So, so working through that, I, the reason I bring that all up is to say that I think we're gonna wanna go potentially through that BOT process. There is a resolution that the council has to approve ahead of time that says, yes, we're okay with going through the BOT process. So I'll have more information on that at the next meeting, but I wanted to at least give you a forewarning that that's kind of the direction we're heading. And hopefully, at that meeting, we may be able to have even some conceptual ideas for you to look at on what that amphitheater could be. Okay, so that's amphitheater. Downtown, as I mentioned in the past, we had our downtown plan that was approved two years ago now, I think, something like that, where we took lots of public input, and they did different exercises at First Fridays and all that kind of stuff, and it came out with a document, a document on downtown revitalization project, and that's on our website right now. So we have re-engaged HWC Engineering, who did that plan, to consider putting together a PER, preliminary engineering report for that downtown project. The concept right now, from a financial perspective, is to look at what I'm calling the plus, which is basically Main Street to Line Street, and then one block north and south on Chancery, so, I'm sorry, in Purin from Main to Line, and one block north and south on Chancery, so the plus, right, as the starting spot. And so we are, we're talking through that with HWC, I think just today, we got a preliminary proposal from them, and so we're looking through those things. So I just want to give you a forewarning, we're looking at maybe twenty-seven, but you get, I think I've said this before to you guys, but twenty-seven maybe for downtown project. guys, but 27 maybe for downtown project. The hope is, is that we can partner multiple, multiple funding opportunities together to make that work, like Community Crossing, Matching Grant Program, and maybe Main Street Revitalization Program through OPA or some things like that. So we've already been talking with Lori Shippen, our grant administrator, on looking at what those options are and how those timelines can meet together and all that kind of stuff. So there's a lot of work on those two projects that are kind of happening that I hope at the next meeting, at least with the amphitheater, I'll have more information for you on there, but I at least wanted to make sure you were aware of that ahead of time. But we're trying to make sure that there are things that are kind of in process. Again, you know, as we've talked about in the past, we're hoping Westgate Phase 3, the third and final phase of Westgate will be next year. We'll be putting in an application here in a month or two, I think, month, for Community Crossings. And we anticipate that all of the money that we would need for that, based on our engineers estimate, based on, I will say, a pretty conservative estimate, if you will, we think we'd have the funds to be able to do that without rubbing theater to pickleball. Okay? So I think there's some good stuff there. Again, you never know the prices or anything like that, but since you brought it up, I thought I'd just give you, I thought about that. So happy to chat more about that if you'd like.
Olivia?
Hi, I'm Olivia. I'm a senior at Columbia City High School. This is my third year on Youth Council. At our last meeting, we welcomed our new sophomores. We just got to know them and we went over expectations we have of each other. Then we went into brainstorming possible service projects for this year. And then we elected our president, vice president, and secretary positions. And for lunch, we met with our department heads and just got to know a little bit about them and what they do. And for our service projects, we went and we cleaned up the Columbia City signs and pulled weeds. And then our next meeting is tomorrow.
It is. Questions, Olivia?
Thank you. I'll give one more, yeah, one more report, which is from Kelly. He is at the street commissioners conference this week, but as mentioned, Concrete Crew is working on that walkpath. And Brooks Construction will be in again for milling and repaving a section of Stone Ridge Drive out of Deer Chase. There were some issues with it. I don't know if like stones or something got caught in the actual paper, but it kind of created a surface that maybe wasn't satisfactory. So they agreed to come in and mill it and then repave that section. So just in case you get questions from Deer Chase about that or if you're watching, now you know that they are planning to be in. I don't have a date for when that is, but hopefully it'll be soon. Also, you may have noticed when they did the painting of lines through Online Street, it was not done correctly. So they repainted it. Again, we did not have to pay for that correction, just for the record, but they did scrape, if you will, that additional line. And they are going to come in and fog seal that section to make sure that it's sealed, because obviously if you scrape off, then you're opening yourself up to water damage, things like that. So they are going to come in and fog seal that section where that mispainting occurred. So that is reported. Okay, so now let's jump back into the regular, regular meeting. Thank you for watching on that. Can I have a motion to read ordinance 2025-13 by title only?
Still moved.
Motion by Jenny, seconded by Tad. Further discussion. All those in favor show with the usual sign. It is unanimous. Please read ordinance 2025-13 by title only.
Ordinance 2025-13, an ordinance admitting chapter 156, control of most construction stormwater runoff of Title 15 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia City, Indiana.
As a reminder, at the last meeting, John Ghost was here to describe kind of what was going on and all that kind of stuff, knowing that this was coming up on the agenda. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2025-13 on first reading?
Still moved.
Second. Motion by Jennifer, seconded by Tad. Further discussion. All those in favor show with the usual sign. It is unanimous. We'll move that to second reading at the next meeting. Next up is ordinance 2025-15. Do I have a motion to read by title only?
Still moved.
Motion by Jenny, seconded by Dan. Further discussion. All those in favor show with the usual sign. It is unanimous. Please read ordinance 2025-15 by title only.
Ordinance 2025-15, an ordinance admitting chapter 56, illicit discharge in connection to the municipal stormwater system of Title 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia City, Indiana.
This also was described by Mr. Ghost at the last meeting. I guess for public record, I probably should mention that these both are in regards to stormwater in the city and how it's handled, specifically for construction projects and other things to that effect. The vast majority of the changes are based on federal mandates that have came down or state mandates that have came down to us, and we've had to adjust based on that. So are there any questions you have about?
Who adorses some of this?
Good question.
Under enforcement, we get to stop work orders. I mean, who, who does that?
Yep. So when there is a construction project, we actually have contracted with the Soil and Water Conservation District with John, who goes out and actually enforces these rules and regulations, if you will. So now I don't know how much of that goes through planning and building and around. I know that John is our contracted employee to kind of watch over those things, but.
We get updated inspection reports. So if they're.
From John?
From John.
Okay.
So as he goes out and does his routine inspections throughout the process, we get a, a copy of those work files.
So officially speaking, are you guys the, I'm sorry, not you guys, let me try again. The Planning and Building Department, are they the enforcement mechanism or is John the enforcement mechanism?
I don't know that we've had to do any enforcement, so I can't really answer that. I would assume it would probably be our, our office that would do the enforcing. Normally it is, if there is something that's in place or needs to be changed, he lets said company know.
Yeah.
The corrections are made. It's reported that they're made.
Yeah.
And go on, but to tell you for sure who the enforcement is through, I would bet you to say it would depend on how in-depth of a violation it was.
Sure.
Whether it was just our code or whether it was state, because I know I definitely get into some situations with that as well.
So for public record, Brent works for the Planning and Building Department, the city county Planning and Building Department. So that's why he's answering the question. So that answers your question, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions regarding 2025-15? Hearing done. Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2025-15 on first reading?
Still moved. Second.
Motion by Brent, seconded by Jennifer. Further discussion. All those in favor show with the usual sign. It is unanimous. We'll move that to second reading at the next meeting. Thank you. Next up, updated Parks Department job descriptions. Matt, do you want to come up here?
Sure. Yeah, I'll just hobble up here.
I'm requesting the council to approve the updated job descriptions. I gave you guys a flow chart. The very first page is how it currently is, and then the second is the way that we hope to have it for the future, for the amphitheater, and to keep events running throughout the park.
So ultimately, if you'll see, what you'll look at here is a couple of things. So changing of Melinda's job description, if you will, or that position from program supervisor to events and recreation supervisor. Basically, the maintenance side does not change. It is really the programmatic side that's changing. Previously, we had an aquatics center manager that obviously during three or four months, five months of the year was pretty busy, but the rest of the year was not maybe as busy as it probably could be. And further, Andrea, who is the program coordinator, has been really taking on a kind of deeper role in the, in the park and management of some of the.
She's been putting on the events for the animal, Indiana Wild and the animal grams from North Manchester. She's getting those events coordinated and, and getting those ready for, for the public. And also, to the mayor's point, we've went the last two years without an aquatic manager. We have two outstanding people that come back every year, Tyler Kissinger and Dave Peterson. And with them and the ordinance with Melinda, the, the pool's been running just fine the last two years.
And they're considered assistant managers or something like that, right?
They, they are.
Pool managers or something.
They're, they're assistant pool managers. Yeah.
So the point is, is that as, as Matt and the parks system continues to diversify the programs we're offering, and as we continue to improve Eagle Park and some of the programs we're offering there, it made a lot of sense to have a kind of a recreation coordinator type position that, that kind of manages lots of different programs. Do you want to talk a little bit about that part?
Yeah, we currently have a baseball coordinator that helps Melinda out. So they're down there at night. And we would not have that position. The recreation coordinator would be told that during the baseball softball season, they would have to come in later in the day because they're going to be working at night to be able to be there when problems occur, because there are. And then that'll take a big chunk off of Melinda, so she's able to help with the pool during the summer, and also Andrea. Then they're going to take over then the JFL program. And then we could start looking at, you know, maybe possibly doing something with pickleball and maybe putting on some lessons or tournaments. And then it's also been discussed, and I, I know, Tad, you were approached last year, as I was, about possibly having like a skate instruction type thing. And that's something that we can, you know, that person would help coordinate and, and do that. So that's kind of what we're looking at.
So here's the biggest part you need to know, is that this is not, this is basically not a new position. We're taking the aquatics director or aquatics manager and changing the title on the job description, okay? There's always been at least one, if not two, assistant manager of the aquatic center, okay? And so that, those positions have continued. We just took out the aquatics director, if you will, and created this, and changed the job description to create this new thing of the broader, the broader piece. One thing I will compliment Matt on is that from the start, from when he started this position, Matt has really tried to focus on not just the sports, but the recreational part of the Parks Department. So the diversification of what we offer to our residents in lots of different ways, from lots of different types of athletics or outdoors or animals or things like that. And so I think this flow chart represents that change so that there's a more of a focus on the broader recreation of our park system instead of just aquatics or sports, right? It's a broader thing. Dollars are already appropriated for this position, just haven't been filled. So again, not a new position, just a change in job description.
But we have to approve the job description and salary, salary.
So you will have to, you will have to approve the job description tonight, and then, then when the salary ordinance comes up, you'll have to approve the range and the salaries. Yes. So. Any questions you have of Matt about any of these positions? Yes?
So do we have a job description or just job title?
So job descriptions are in your box. I don't know if you saw that, but.
Mine isn't connected.
I got you. Position descriptions, there's a recreational coordinator, a recreation coordinator, excuse me. There's a recreation and events supervisor and a events coordinator position. All three of those job descriptions are in there. My understanding is you've worked with Beth on these positions to kind of tighten them up to where they need to be?
Right. So.
No, I respect what you've done. I think that's a, yeah, the parks isn't just sports and I, I respect what you've done to create these positions and I can't imagine doing that, but I think you guys are a good job.
Other questions you have? Okay. Thanks, Matt.
All right.
With that, then I guess what I will ask for is, I'll ask for approval of the position description for the recreation coordinator as presented.
Second.
No, you got a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can't motion. I can't motion on this one.
I'll make a motion. Have we approved the, uh, uh, position descriptions for our Parks Department as presenting?
Do you want all three?
All three.
Okay. So that'd be recreation coordinator, recreation and events supervisor, and events coordinator.
Correct.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Jennifer. Further discussion. All those in favor show with the usual sign. It is unanimous. Thank you. Matt, thanks for your hard work on that. I think it'll, I really think it'll, it does a better job of lining up our staff where they're putting their resources and time in right now, and also prepares us for future programmatic things that I'm, I'm really excited about seeing at the parks. So.
Thank you guys as well, if you get to hear it.
Okay. With that, Leslie?
I have nothing.
A couple of things I'll mention. I mentioned it in Board of Works, but I'll mention it again. Obviously, one of our three county commissioners tragically passed away last week. And, you know, Chad and I, Chad and I have had a weird relationship over many years now, but over these last couple of years especially, we've really worked together on a lot of things. And I'm, I'm obviously so sad to see him go. I'm sad for his family and for the whole Banks family. And the funeral today, I thought, was a really beautiful funeral. I hated being there, but I'm glad I got to be there. And so our heart goes out to our friends of the county, certainly the whole Banks family, and, you know, his wife and kids and everybody like that. Our county has been changed because of, of Chad. And so we, we mourn with them and we'll continue to work well with the county as we have and going forward. So maybe I'll say about that right now. So as Olivia mentioned, we have our youth council meeting tomorrow, so it may be a little wet, but we'll go out and trim those trails. That's what we're supposed to do for our service project. We have Little Turtle Elementary's third graders coming in on Thursday, and I have a mayor's roundtable on Friday up in Auburn. But on Saturday, we have the Family Safety Festival. My assistant, Ashley, has worked with fire department, police department, and others to put that event on. And I think it's going to be a really nice, nice event. Apparently, right now, knock on wood, whether it looks like it's supposed to be good. We kind of had started this as a part of the Summer in the City program a year or two ago, a year last year or two years?
Two years ago, we were kind of with the farmers market.
Yes. So it's kind of being done in conjunction with the farmers market as it has last couple of years. Actually, I think it's the last, is it the last farmers market, I think, this week, this company, Saturday? Yes. So I think it's actually last farmers market plus Family Safety Festival. Long story short, it's lots of great activities for families. Hope individuals will come out 9:00 to noon, obviously on Van Buren Street here in downtown, and then stick, stick around and grab some lunch from one of the vendors or one of the restaurants downtown and shop a little bit and that kind of good stuff. Besides that, obviously, like I said, we have a lot of things happening. Hopefully, we can get some of these projects squared away and closed off for this year. And, but I'm really happy that we're making a lot of really good progress. So with that, I'll, I guess one thing I'll also mention is, is that we will have CIP committee after this council meeting. For those that are on video, we will pause, basically pause the video and then restart it with CIP. So it'll kind of continue going. So stick around if you're going to stay, stay right and watch CIP. So Dan? Chip?
I have nothing.
Ted?
Just that we had a good ordinance meeting today. We are actually making progress.
Okay.
Baby steps, right, Gary and Tom? Baby steps.
Baby steps. Yeah. Thank you. Jenny?
I have nothing.
Brent?
I have nothing.
We have no press. Anything from the audience? Okay, hearing done, then we will adjourn the council meeting. Thank you.
Mayor, I have just a minute.
Mayor, I have just a minute.
Okay, we will call the CIP, which is Capital Improvement Program Committee, to order here. First thing we're going to go through is the CIP, or the Capital Improvement Plan for 2025 through 2030. As you know, this is a part of the budget, so I think you all have seen this a little bit, but the document is something we put together and then we ultimately have to give it over to the county. I think the county actually has to put this with us as well. Thankfully, they never have to push back too much on that. But I apologize for the formatting of it because it looked great on my computer. When it printed out, it printed weird, so I apologize for that. But ultimately, the first, what, one, two, three-ish pages are pretty much what the standard there. So let's go to where it says 2025 through 30, Capital Improvement Plan. Again, the things that are highlighted, obviously, we change based on whether the council approved or not and all that kind of good stuff. But nevertheless, for street and sewer, as mentioned, and this actually may be easier to look at when you look at the graphs, which are on the, what, next, maybe two pages from there. It may be a little easier to see the flow of that. So there at the top, you see kind of the overall CIP budget over the next, you know, kind of 25, the end of 25, if you will, kind of where the numbers ended up, and then going 26 to the, to 30 there, as proposed. So go down to the next graph there, or next chart, excuse me. That's still not the word I'm looking for, the next spreadsheet, there we go. And you'll see sidewalk and curb enhancement of $100,000 this year. That's what we spent. That went toward the overall sidewalk, ADA ramp, all that kind of stuff. Plan for 2026 is to spend $100,000 there in, on the Westgate project and... Yes, okay. It's weird because it's broken up differently, but anyways. So $100,000 there in the Westgate project for that kind of sidewalk and curb stuff, if you will. And then 27, the hope is we have downtown revitalization, so there's some money there. Back in 28, for regular sidewalk and curb enhancement. 29, maybe a second phase of downtown rebuy. 2030, again, anything really past 27 is a guess at this point, but you can kind of see the plan there. For the next portion is what I would call park and trail. So this year, of course, we spent $300,000 of CIP for the Blue River Trail Extension down to the high school property, as well as $85,000 toward Eagle Park improvements. That really was just kind of cleanup stuff for Eagle Park. I don't plan to spend a whole lot of money in those categories until maybe 2028, where we may do a trail extension or something. The goal, the next trail extension goal theoretically would be going west to the Westgate and Deer Chase neighborhoods. But again, those are kind of preliminary ideas and thoughts. The next spreadsheet, then you, then you can see there, street paving of, you know, this year, $210,000 with Westgate being $95,000. The reason I put it that way was that my hope is, is that with the savings that we'll have on the street paving contract, that we can roll a dollar figure over for the actual inspection of next year's Westgate project. So that's kind of why I put it in there. It's a caveat because if we don't get community crossings, then they blow everything up here. But generally speaking, that's what we're hoping for. 2026, $300,000 toward Westgate, and then $50,000 toward downtown revitalization PER, which I talked about in the council meeting. And then hopefully, that $300,000 we normally put toward paving goes toward downtown rebuy for 27. And then back to regular, back to our, let's say, normally scheduled program of street paving, and then maybe a downtown rebuy and back to street paving, so. And then lastly, in the economic development, community development category there, you can see kind of what we've put dollar-wise into things. The 170 up top, we've done toward miscellaneous, oop, let me grab my thing here. We put toward multiple different projects this year. We actually, as a part of that, was a, we originally budgeted $75,000 for tourism and promotions. And you'll probably remember that after looking at our videos that were produced by CGI, we said, "Okay, let's not spend that money. Let's save it and move it to a different category," if you will. So that kind of went into the unplanned projects category, I believe, right? So that was, so that kind of, that, the 170 is a little bit of a misnomer. It probably should have been closer to 95, if my math is correct there, because of that. Chamber supports across the board, Columbia City connects across the board. We do have agreements on both of those. Obviously, that's always up for discussion at future dates if you'd like. Yearly unplanned projects, I did move things into, for 2026, into the unplanned project category. Ultimately, the numbers passed, they were just guesses. I mean, they're just, they're just guesses, just because we never know, as you are well aware, we never know where things are going to land. So going back to the original spreadsheet there, you can kind of see where we're at. Roughly, the goal is roughly $700,000. We get a little bit more, a little bit less, it just kind of depends on what the year is. Obviously, if we have an economic recession, these are income tax dollars, so that dollar figure will drop. Here's the other thing that's kind of the kicker, and I sort of hinted at it during council, but we're going to need to look at passing an income tax for our residents. And the reason I say that is, is because the state of Indiana has said, surprise, in Senate, in Rold Act I, surprise, if your county has a income tax and city and towns have been getting those dollars, surprise, after 2027, you don't get those anymore. You have to pass your own income tax. And you have a capped level of, or you have a capped amount of what percentage that is. So I only say that to say that I think going forward, our council is going to have, sorry, our council is going to have a hard conversation to have, that we're going to have to pass our own income tax. Here's the other kicker on that, I'm going way too deep, but it's important to know. The other kicker on that is that we don't know what kind of revenue that income tax will generate for the city. Because even the state of Indiana doesn't have parcel-by-parcel data on how much income, income taxes are brought in by the businesses within our city limits. They can tell you from the county, because that's easy. What county are you in, or what county, you know, do you work in? They don't know that, city limits, town limits, rural areas. So apparently, the state is supposed to be honing in on how they do that and fixing the data so that you can identify that, but that is still yet to be seen. But I just say that to say, when you look at the CIP plan, know that this is going to be thrown out the window and burned because unless something changes at the legislature, income taxes are going to change as we know it. It will be very different than what we know right now.
Will we, will we plan to, you know, income tax for the county also?
So, so here's the other thing, yes, is that for the state of Indiana, the state of Indiana in the legislature has said that if you, that the county passes an income tax, then all residents of the county, including city residents, will pay that county income tax. And then if the city pays an income tax, city residents will pay that income tax. And their point, their idea is, instead of property taxes, let's supplement it with income taxes. The problem is, it's not a one-for-one deal. $1 of property taxes is not the same as $1 of income taxes. So in some communities where they have really high income, then they have probably, if not the same, more income tax revenue. In other communities, frankly, like ours, my gut would say that our income tax revenue will be lower than the amount of property tax dollars that we're losing in Senate Rold Act I. And meanwhile, if you're watching public, you end up getting hosed because you're now paying more taxes than you were under the previous property tax system.
And we're being double taxed.
Absolutely. The same thing goes for the wheel tax, right? The wheel tax, the state of Indiana has said, we, I'm sorry, I'm on a, okay. Same as the wheel tax. If the county passes a wheel tax, the city can also pass a wheel tax, and then it's double taxation of our residents, right? So it's, the system has been changed. Now, full disclosure, I do think that they understand this double taxation issue is a challenge. So my hope is, is that in this upcoming session, you will see some changes to that, or at least some protection for our residents, who would get double taxed if we did that, to try to make up the revenue that they, that we lost, that they cut out, right? But nevertheless...
I know that's a little, that's a security.
Well, I get that. I appreciate that and understand that. So I just wanted to tell you that as you look at the CIP plan, or this Capital Improvement Plan, that you need to know that anything past 27 is going to be different than what I proposed because I don't know what it's going to look like. I have no clue what the revenue will be. I don't even know if we'll be able to do capital improvement program instead of just supplementing the revenue that we've lost in the property tax game, right? So I apologize for getting on a bit of a soapbox, but that is what we're facing. And again, until and unless they change it, that's the situation we're going to be living in. So, sorry, now to put a wet blanking on this thing, but any questions about the CIP?
I don't have a question, right?
I know you don't, I know, I know. Any questions about CIP? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the Capital Improvement Plan for 2025 through 2030?
Second.
Okay, motion by Dan, second by Jenny, for the discussion. All those in favor, sure, with the usual sign? It is unanimous, thank you. Okay, next up, and lastly, I think you only have one issue, right?
Yes, yes, I'm bringing before you, oh, you want me, you, go ahead.
Before, yes, I think I need to abstain from this conversation just because I'm related to the presenter or the...
The business?
Business.
Okay.
Okay. So the Square, it's the Square, which is downtown Columbia City, is requesting a financial assistance for renovation. I, we came up with a, several months ago, a scoring system. They scored well compared to everybody else, how we've been giving them, so we can't, you know, it's not a plus or a minus. What they're doing, I, or Leslie put some stuff in your Dropbox as of, they're changing out the booths, you know, putting in wood floors and laminate floors instead of carpet, just kind of doing a, an upmodel of it. They're, they're asking, I'm sorry to say this, but a lot for their match, and I think you have it all there in front of you, but I'm just open to debate on what type of assistance you feel is needed. I mean, it's a staple for downtown Columbia City. We all go there, you know, it's a, it's a major lunch and dinner spot in downtown. It's been there forever, and so, you know, I don't, I think it's a good investment, but I don't know what, how much you guys want to give. I know that one thing, our, their hood is not compliant with current standards now, so that is a mandatory change. And I know, I put another quote in for another part of the hood. So, you know, there you've got, you've got almost, you know, $4,200 in expenses that, that we're going to have, that are going to have to be changed. So it's, you know, it's a toss-up, so I'll let you guys figure out what you want to do.
So the request is for the, I mean, so they, they anticipate $84,000 worth of renovation clients?
Renovation, correct.
And obviously, they've listed multiple things on here that they would like us to maybe help with, or at least a dollar figure of what they'd like to...
I mean, I do know they did tell me that they've increased jobs since the last owner. You know, they are bringing in good revenue and helping with more jobs and providing us more tax base off of that, but, you know...
Do you have a timeframe in which they, they're planning to actually do this?
I do not.
That they want to do this?
I do not.
Okay.
Sad to say that.
Well, I guess a part of that is that I, I do wonder if, you know, again, I, I think in past meetings, we have considered the idea of placing a... So I, I know what you put, when you said the scoring system, that they, that they scored well in our economic scoring system, right? I think, but one of the things I know in the past we've talked about is, is maybe figuring out a formula or something that is valuable for giving economic grants to the current businesses.
Our problem is, we're going to have to start from new, because we can't go from, I, I tried doing it from old, and it's so over the place that I'm like, okay, we need to start from new. So I'll look into doing that for the next CIP meeting, mini-meeting. But yeah, it's, I mean, we've had some, but we've had some startup businesses that didn't score as well, but, you know, are now succeeding, so it's kind of a, a toss-up on that, you know, and...
Well, I think obviously, we, so I know one of the projects that we've given money to was Ozara's, but to be clear, it was to the building owner to install some of the stuff in Ozara's, right? Things that were not taken when the, when the restaurant closed.
Correct.
And so the goal is, is obviously to refill that with some kind of a restaurant or retail or some sort in that way, so that the dollars that were spent, that we assisted with, let's say. And granted, that was a very significant financial investment by them into that building, so I think there was definitely justification for it. But, but I think it, it is a point to say, in the multiple projects we've helped with, that they don't all succeed. But when we put money into the building, then even if the restaurant doesn't succeed, or even if the actual business doesn't succeed, the building is still primed and ready for another business to come in and succeed. So I think that's one really critical piece for, for the public to know, so. Jenny, do you have any thoughts down there?
I really think that we need to figure out like a good way to have metrics in making decisions or allotments of new business and existing business to see where we're at there. Like, it's hard to justify giving money to everyone. Like, I could see helping them out with the hood situation, because we could help with out multiple other restaurants for the hood situation. And I want to see restaurants to stay in Columbia City and stay downtown. But like, there has to be other things, other ways we can, like, look at metrics.
Hundred percent. And, and this is, just for your information, the only other one, we, we've only given one other, you know, longstanding restaurant at one time. So this is kind of new for us, too, you know, and...
That is also specifically for a hood system, is not?
Correct, correct, yes.
So I think, you know, kind of a, I'll say, ad hoc policy, if you will, that this committee has had is, is in order to help ensure that our restaurants are up to code when it comes to the hood, is that we have provided, I think, up to $5,000, if you will, toward a hood system to ensure compliance. And frankly, a part of that has been because it's our fire department that comes in and creates, and, you know, creates the issue because they're not following fire code, right? And back up, we're not creating an issue, to be clear, we're enforcing the fire code. But, you know, appears to many of them that we're creating the issue, when in reality, they're just not following fire code.
Correct.
So I say all that just to say that that's kind of been the ad hoc kind of policy of this committee. But, but again, there's been other things we also have funded to make, make things work. And I think many of those aren't working well in downtown right now. But I agree with you, Jenny, I think there needs to be some kind of a rubrics, some kind of a...
Just checks and balances.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I would love to help out other businesses besides just restaurants, too.
Yes, I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, again, I think one of those things, I think, you know, you may have mentioned, is having some kind of financial background, like, how, how are these people, how are these businesses doing, right? Especially if they're a long-established business, right? I know in the past, when we've had other businesses that have came to us, new businesses that are moving in, you know, there is typically some kind of background that we know about them, what they are going to do. There's usually some kind of a standard of some sort to say, you know, as I think about Chivo, you know, he had background in restaurant business. There was a deal between him and, and the, and the owner of the building and how they were going to handle that, and some of the...
And we've put a timeframe on that, yeah.
Frame on how long they'll be open, or there's a clock, right? We also, when I think about the barbecue place, right? There was, it was investing in the building, because the building needed lots of upgrades to the electrical, and to the water, and to some of those things.
Yeah.
Think about Ozara's, same kind of scenario, investing in the building and the equipment within the building. And that then, and, you know, allowed an appreciable tax increase for us and for our city residents, obviously. So, so I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, well, I know where I was going with that, and that is, I, I do think that there needs to be some accountability for those existing businesses to give us that background of, how have you been doing? You know, obviously, do you have capital for these projects, things to that effect, right? And I think we've tried to take some need into, into some of these decisions in the past, for sure. So I don't know your thoughts, I just kind of, I don't know if I reiterated your thoughts or not.
You have, you definitely have, okay.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'm open, if you want to table it, to the next CIP committee meeting, or, or what your thoughts are, I'm, I'm open to anything.
I think really, we need to know exactly the timeframe of when they're wanting to do everything. Like, is it this year or is it next year? Because that actually goes into play with our budget.
It does, absolutely. Also knowing maybe a little bit of the financial background of, of the business. I think that would be helpful. Again, I, I say, in the majority of other businesses that we have funded, and this isn't the same against Square, by the way, this is just, we need to probably be veteran, just say, here's what we're going to need to make decisions, right? But a part of that is for Chivo, and for Ozara's, if you will, and I know maybe this is not the building owners, but for those, I mean, we've known, here's how much the total investment's going to be. Here is the background, here's what the building owner is putting into it. Here's what we anticipate sales are going to be. Here are the amount of jobs we're creating, here's the amount of X, Y, and Z. So I think maybe having some financial backing for this proposal would be helpful to give us a clearer picture of the need, if you will.
Okay.
I think I a hundred percent agree with what you said earlier. The Square's a great business in downtown, has been there for a long time. Heck, youth council's going there tomorrow for lunch.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so I'm, I'm happy to, I want to keep them in downtown Columbia City, and I, I want to be able to help them. I just think we as, being responsible with taxpayer dollars, need to have more of that financial information to know where they're at. Yeah, Leslie.
So here, here's my question, and this would be a question that I would want to know from her, the owner. So she's saying that she's going to increase jobs available due to the increase of patrons. Based upon what I'm seeing, are they really going to have more seating for folks? What, what does she mean behind that statement? Because it looks to me like it's not going to be any more seating.
I think, I think they'll just, it'll be more attractive, get, maybe get more clientele.
So, but you, I can say, a lot of times you go in there and there's not a place to sit.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, if, if she's really thinking that, is she going to expand for hours? Is she going to look at, I mean, how many employees does she think she's going to need to hire to be able to keep up with, hey, if I have more individuals coming in and we're open until 10 o'clock, what's that going to look like?
Yeah. I have told people that, that, you know, a lot of this money comes from, from, you know, their taxes that they pay, and more employees that they hire, the more taxes we get. So, you know, that's a way of funding it, so yeah, I will...
There's an appreciable tax value to city residents to invest in places where there's going to be a tax return, that we can continue to help, you know, businesses grow and thrive here. So, so no, I, and actually, as I'm looking at the, the pictures myself, I'm, you know, I'm asking similar questions to Leslie, but I'm also, okay, so I'm assuming Salavar's going to stay where it's at. I'm assuming that, you know, seating, it appears, is going to stay basically where it's at. So then my follow-up question on that is, is, okay, so I know that they do have that back room, and the back room is typically for, I think, gatherings and some parties and things like that. I don't know how much they open it up to the general public. Probably more of a staffing issue than anything else on that. But, you know, again, to Leslie's point, there are definitely times where you walk in and there's no seats, and you're waiting, you're waiting a significant amount of time. And I, that's a great problem to have, but still a problem. So if, I agree, if there's a, if there is some more concrete numbers of how increased patronage, I think that would be, is that right, where's patronage? Something like that, so. Any other thoughts, ideas to, for, to send Chip back with?
Something that information would be helpful, maybe, see.
And I love it when honestly, the business owners come in or the, and see how much they're investing.
That's, that's what I did not, I, you know, sometimes I'm like, I do, sometimes I don't. So I will, that'll be on my next one, because I didn't know how you guys felt about that, too.
Well, again, I think that needs to be something else that we as a committee need to decide. Do we want the business owner to come in and to present to us? And then obviously, we make a decision at that meeting typically. So is that something that we're comfortable with? Do we want to keep it all on Chip? Do we want to make the little business owner come in and do a full presentation?
I think the business owner should do a presentation, and they should be ready to say here a yes or a no answer. But keep in mind, like, I'm not going to be on the CIP committee for a long time.
Yeah.
I know it does, I'm sure it's not the favorite thing that Chip loves to do, is give bad news or good news either.
No, no, it's fine.
And maybe this could alleviate the going back and forth between CIP, because they did answer questions.
Yeah, I think we've only done it once, and I never knew. It's always been a gray area, you know, we've kind of just throwing stuff against the wall and see what sticks. So yeah, I'm fine with that.
But I do think we do need to go back and look at the metric system and see how we can look at it and see how much each business is going to invest in the company themselves, and see what they envision, and see how that's going to increase sales or increase availability for all of our citizens to go to.
Yeah, I do think it's fair, though, to go back and, and let them know that the request versus their investment is way too high. I think it's fair to say that the city is always, always wants to be the last money in, and we definitely don't want to be anywhere near 50%, heck, even, even 20% of the investment. We don't like being that close, anything. So I just think it's important for her to know that before she comes in, or whatever we decide to do in the future, that, that we want to be an aid, but we don't want to be the major stakeholder, because we're, again, unless we're getting some kind of a stake, a stake in the business, that is a, that's, I don't think that's a line that the city wants to cross.
Good.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Okay, did I give you enough information?
Yes.
So do we want to shoot for, just if you guys can grab your calendars really quick, do we want to shoot for a CIP meeting on the, after October 28th meeting?
How soon does she need to know?
I don't know, I'll find out. You know what, I, I'll find out and get ahold of everybody.
Gotcha. Because I was going to say, if we can just pencil it in for October 28th, oh wait, is that, is that fault break?
No, no.
Oh, that's right, because it's already here.
He knows.
He knows, he knows. Okay, so if we can pencil in CIP for 28th of October, that that will at least be the next potential meeting, but if for some reason she's in a hurry to get a project done, maybe we can do this after the first meeting in October, we'll see. Okay? Anything else for the rest of CIP? Okay, we will call the meeting adjourned, thank you.